It is Tuesday, February ninth, ten o'clock, two thousand sixteen. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. This time we're going to take a little moment of reflection. I'm going to take a minute or so here, less than a minute, I think. Okay, the pledge allegiance was supposed to be led by Daniel Standring, Eaglesat, and I don't see that he's here, so we're going to have the clerk lead us in the pledge allegiance. Kylie?
My pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, introduction of new employees. I thought we were going to have somebody, no? Any actions from closed session, County Council?
No reportable action.
Okay. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and that matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Is there any such item? Okay, we're going to move on to brief announcements from supervisors on their activities, possibly things that are upcoming, and what they've done the last couple of weeks. Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hemmingson. After our last board meeting, I attended the annual Del Norte County Fair Volunteer Appreciation Dinner. These volunteers for the past year, the volunteer for the year for the past year was Robin Parker, and the 2015 rodeo committee was honored again by the California Rodeo Association as the top rodeo committee, an award it has garnered in eight of the last nine years. The Visitors Bureau met for a strategic workshop in Smith River last Saturday. I'm pleased to report the financial health of the Visitors Bureau is in good health, and the highlight of the morning was discussion and plans for 2016 centered on the best way to market and sell our community, especially to the millennial population and younger population. The consensus is technology will continue to grow in reaching the next visitor to Del Norte County, but the attention to the printed material should not be relaxed, as so many of our visitors who come to the community are of baby boomer age. The Visitors Bureau was meeting this afternoon to review the map of Del Norte County and how we can highlight the list of growing activities and communicate that information to our next visitor. Last Wednesday, I attended my first local mental health board meeting at the Mental Health Office on K Street. The agenda focused on mental health service updates and conducting a census of those who are without home, that is, living in the brush surrounding our community. The local mental health board meets the first Wednesday of each month. I also attended the Del Norte Regional Transportation Plan Community Meeting at the City Wastewater Treatment Facility. Projects and funding for the next ten-year period and the ten years following that for twenty years was discussed through the year 2036. Jeff Schwein with Green Dot Transportation Consultants fielded questions from a sizable audience discussing local, state, and regional roads, bridges, public transit, aviation, bicycles, recreational travel, and air quality to environmental issues. I also want to remind everybody that today, the city will be, starting today, its B Street Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, where seven hundred and fifty lineal feet of thirty-six-inch PVC pipe will replace the sixty-year-old clay sewer pipe between the water treatment facility on Second Street. There may be some street blockage on Second Street, but all intersections will be open for this project, which is anticipated to be about three months. More renovation going on in our district, renovation of the seafood market on Front Street is ongoing, and soon to be a microbrewery, lots of activity there. And the Gardenia Motel has now closed escrow on 101 Southbound, and it will soon be a Motel Six, very excited about that news. And I've come to learn, and our supervisors have been notified, of there's a new movement at Last Chance Grade. Caltrans has initiated an emergency project to repair the retaining wall, improve the vertical undulating alignment, install signs and cameras and slope lighting, along with replacing guard railing on the failing shoulders. So I met with a group of Del Norte County citizens last week regarding the progress of selecting and building an alternate route around Last Chance Grade. It was a very somber conversation. The unanimous opinion expressed is Congressman Jared Huffman and the committee is working as hard as it can to secure the necessary funding to locate and build the bypass. It's a very tedious process, which regrettably has no shortcut. Knowing this, our Board of Supervisors needs to move the discussion on a plan for residents should the route collapse before the bypass can be researched and built. Those who addressed me made it crystal clear that each felt the road would collapse into the Pacific long before a viable route could be selected, studied, and constructed, and I agree with that opinion. The Board of Supervisors should engage the community for the inevitable catastrophe. I was reminded of that sobering fact after listening to Last Chance Grade project manager Sebastian Cohen two weeks ago here at our meeting when I asked him, what was the plan after the road collapses? He stated, there's no definitive plan, no clear answer when that happens, so I seek no fault here of anyone, I just see a travesty in route and in slow motion moving forward. Hard questions need to be addressed now by our board. How do we move people and freight through Del Norte County if we are without the bypass? And how does Del Norte County businesses survive during this period? How does it move its product or service? How will elderly derive lifesaving medical care if they're seeking that care in Eureka? Will there be ferry service to access our harbor delivering goods and commerce? Despite our most heroic efforts, experts all agree Last Chance Grade is doomed, and gravity will ultimately prevail. Now our board must prepare our community for that eventuality, and on the agenda for fifteen, there'll be a letter that I'll ask our board to send in support of Caltrans' effort to declare Last Chance Grade an emergency status route. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. It's been a busy, busy couple of weeks. Lot going on, I'll try to cover some of the actions like Supervisor Gitlin, also attended the local transportation commission's development and reporting on the regional transportation plan and input for that. Also attended Tri-Agency where we discussed amongst other things our current debt with USDA, and in addition, moving forward with some tourism reporting and accountability with the input of public funds that were made in two thousand six and continue to be made today to really see how those public funds have affected where tourism gone has gone in the last several years, and looking forward to that study being conducted by the Council Economic Advisers and reported back to the Tri-Agency. Be very interesting to hear. Also discussed at Tri-Agency, a lot about broadband, which Supervisor Finnegan has been really vocal about in trying to figure out how we could really utilize the redundancy piece and bandwidth that we have here, and it is a very serious question that we do need to address because we as Del Norte County are light years ahead of where our neighboring counties are on these issues of communication because we do have now the facilities to take care of communication-type needs that other communities that do not have these will be a long ways behind where we're at now, so that question does need to be answered, and maybe Tri-Agency is the best place to answer it. Also attended a meeting by Redwood National and State Parks specific to answer concerns that the fishing guides have had experiences with by enforcement officers, rangers with the national and state parks, and more on the national park sides, and I believe the National Park Superintendent has done an excellent job in convening a meeting and having an open, transparent discussion around some of these concerns that guides have had around enforcement and making it more welcoming to people who come to our community to experience our natural resources, making sure that that experience is great and not being distracted by maybe young rangers coming out of the academy that aren't used to the kind of life that we have here, but was glad to see that conversation take place, and Supervisor Hemmingson did attend that with me. Also attended a very productive meeting of the city and county on a two-by-two, I see Mr. Enscore in the audience, making great forward progress, in my opinion, with the city on addressing some significant issues that we do have together, specific to the West Park subdivision and sewer hookups and some funds, but that conversation now, I believe, is moving in a very productive direction, and I'm glad Councilman Enscore is here to help move that along. Tended also a meeting with our auditor and treasurer with the school district. One of the resounding issues that we've had in the past is communication with our district that represents a large sizable chunk of our treasury, and we've had very little participation from the district in the past year and a half in helping to guide decisions, investment-type decisions that we have with that treasury, and I was glad to see an open, honest discussion from the district on their viewpoints of how that treasury would be run, and more importantly, an open, honest discussion from our auditor and treasurer on how those needs need to be given to us so proper direction can be had in the future, and I know the district now with the Superintendent Harris has made that commitment to have somebody there and help us at our quarterly meetings make sure those investments are in the right direction for the community. Attended a great meeting that was done by building healthy communities on literacy and some of the obstacles in the way to literacy here being achieved by many youth in our community. It's part of an ongoing study that will likely be reported soon to the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors, as I know we're very attentive on this issue, but just seeing some of the obstacles for families in need at various levels within our community on what they're, what is keeping them from having resources available to help their child become literate was mind-boggling, that's very complex, and we know that if we don't have these children properly prepared, even by the time they hit a preschool age, the odds of them succeeding are very low, and this is exactly why we as a Board of Supervisors, this is exactly why we as the Del Norte County School District need to continue paying a great deal of attention to this issue because eventually those kids will be in our system and will be costing us as taxpayers a great deal more money than they would as a child. Attended yesterday a discussion with the Department of Fish and Game and representatives from the California Fish and Game Commission, Jackie Hostler in particular, with CEO of Serena at the Uroq tribal headquarters in relation to the Blue Creek study that is being prepared specifically at the request of the commission to look at some of the issues with angling mortality around Blue Creek. At the same time, Supervisor Hemmings and I are preparing to travel to Sacramento tomorrow to address the commission on the importance of the economic impact of the closure of that fishery and the effect it had to us in two thousand fifteen. We know for a fact, just based on that closure this year, the impact to six guides alone was a hundred and two thousand dollars for a three-and-a-half-week period. That's unacceptable for a county with our demographic, absolutely unacceptable, so we know the commission has to consider economic effects, and if they don't do a proper job at considering those economic effects, especially on a species that is not listed or may not need protection, it calls into question the reasons why arbitrary and capricious decisions were made at their meeting last April that closed that fishery. We hope to change their minds, reopen the fishery, and do a study concurrent to that open fishery that would eventually answer the question mortality, which the Uroq tribe seems to want to answer, in addition to the county Board of Supervisors wanting to have that answer, because we all know that's an important resource to protect. I see, I see some friends in the audience that are here, and I need to express my, the importance of a conversation we'll have soon amongst the Board of Supervisors with SB-88, which SB-88 is in relation to emergency drought relief measures that have come out of the State Water Resources Control Board, and we've all heard Senator McGuire discuss with us that one size doesn't fit all, and this is particularly true for Del Norte and Humboldt Counties. Our Big Rock Community Service District has taken the lead for Del Norte County in organizing a coalition around addressing this issue of one size fits all, and they have also done incredible outreach with the other CSDs to bring this coalition together of not only Del Norte County but Humboldt County to help address this issue where we as a community might be charged with measuring even at an hourly basis our water consumption. The cost of this to community our size and especially to our CSDs is astronomical, because not only will you have to certify that the unit that you're putting in place can measure properly, you also have to go out and purchase the unit, which the cost is huge, and this is not just for our CSDs, this is also for our farmers in the area. But remember, this is being balanced on the notion that there is emergency drought for Humboldt and Del Norte Counties in particular. This is a statewide emergency, a relief bill. It does not apply to Del Norte County, and we need to make sure our legislatures are well aware, our legislators are well aware, like Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire, that we need to express to the State Water Board that it does not fit Del Norte County, and more particularly, we need to be exempted from these regulations, and I hope to hear a presentation on this very soon on SB-88. Addressing very quickly, because I know we have a short agenda, I didn't want to disappoint you, Supervisor Hemmingson, but just traveling over Last Chance Grade, the last twice or three times in the last week and a half, it is falling apart there, and I'm not sure what has changed since Sebastian Cohen presented to us a couple of weeks ago, but it, I know we skipped over that presentation very quickly after it was completed because our meeting was running long, but I do believe we as the board need to, need to address this in a way that doesn't necessarily step on toes, but does address it from maybe a different angle, and maybe Supervisor Gitlin's points are well taken. Maybe we can have the conversation on what if it did collapse tomorrow? How is the county prepared from an OES standpoint on moving transportation forward out of this area? In addition, it seemed to me that there could potentially be roadblocks per se with Caltrans' communication with federal highways, and I'm not sure if Supervisor Finnegan could add anything to this conversation, but it appeared to me that Caltrans was having difficulty within the required regulations on how an emergency would be interpreted. Does it have to fail to be considered an emergency? And I'm not entirely sure if the board, if any action would be necessary, but the question and discussion that might need to be had, Supervisor Finnegan, is can the board help in the discussion with federal highways to figure out this issue of what constitutes an emergency, to, in this case, expedite the funding, which seems to be the big holdup on the Caltrans side, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I too had a fairly busy week, a busy couple of weeks, and yesterday we did the Redwood Coast Transit Authority review of the request for proposals for the new director, and there were four applications, and all seemed very worthy, and we did a conference call with about six different people, and then we scored it, and now it's going to go to the next level. I too, we participated in the city two-by-two, and that was very, a very fruitful meeting, and I think that the main theme of that meeting is what can we get done right now? And it's like, let's get, let's start working on stuff rather than, oh, we need a little more time, or we, so it was a very, it was cooperative, and there was an air of cooperation that was very pleasant to be in that room with the meeting. I did solid wasted agenda review, and that has been set, and I attended just for a brief period of time the regional transportation meeting because I had another meeting that was very interesting, and that was with a group of people from True North, and it was a group of people that were just interviewing, they were from the Latino community, and interviewing to find out exactly what do supervisors do, and what are your goals, and how, what, how does everything work? And I was surprised to learn that some of the, you know, some of the big hurdles to get over for people is coming into a new culture, and one of the things that was outstanding for me that I hope that we can get the dialogue going was that there was a certain amount of apprehension from the folks there about if they needed something additional from school, from the educational institutions, and there was an uneasiness about going to the school in case, they didn't want to ruffle anybody's feathers because there was always the fear of being possibly deported, and so that was, that's part of that discussion that's happening. I participated in the point-in-time survey, and I think it went well. I think that we can improve where our counting and we can, it's imperative that we start making sure that we have the data on the housing needs in our community because there's money coming from the state, and if we have all of our ducks in a line, so to speak, we can possibly have a better chance of getting supportive housing for moderately and low-income people in our community. I spent an entire day, which I thought was going to be kind of boring and over the top, but I wanted to do it to support our, to support Cindy Henderson and her emergency services program, and so I attended the senior officials hazardous preparedness program for senior, senior members of the, that are elected officials to come and what, what do we do, and how much do we have, and it's my understanding, I mean, and hopefully if I'm mis-speaking, Cindy will correct it, but there's only about seventy-two hours of gas and food in our community if we have a giant disaster, and so we do need to have that discussion on exactly what are we doing, and I know that they've done some cache sites on places, but we need to really know as a community, and I think what Cindy's doing with the trainings in the, in the neighborhoods, that's going to be a big, that's going to be a big help, because I remember when we had the sixty-four tsunami, and it was like people kind of stood for a while and went, what do we do now? And the same kind of thing happened when the Clamath Bridge went out at first, it was like, what do we do now? And we ended up with a, with a ferry going across the river. I also, the senior center, we finished up the employee handbook, hopefully, and, but we did have a considerable discussion on the possibility of becoming a community action council, because when those were formed in California, there wasn't an agency in Del Norte County to offer itself as the community assistance council, and so we are missing out on some funds that we're going to try to, we're going to try to see if we can collect them, and that's, I'm excited about that. I'm on my way this afternoon to Moro Bay, where I expect there have been more than eleven thousand emails received, and there have been thousands and thousands of letters sent, and it's all over personnel issue at the Coastal Commission, but I anticipate tomorrow we'll probably have about seven to maybe nine hours of testimony where people get two minutes apiece, so you can, I can tell that it's going to be a long day tomorrow, so the sooner we're out of here, the sooner I can get to my hotel and prep for my meeting tomorrow. Oh, and I left one thing off, and it was so exciting. The HSU brass band, which is a full-on brass band, they came up here because of one of their former members, they only, they only do one performance a year, and it's usually first semester, but this year they did two performances, and they did one up here at Crescent Elk, but they did it because of the young woman who's doing her student teaching at the high school, and she used to be part of that band, and the students from Del Norte High School, it was so, it was so fun to see them, so excited about their teacher doing, you know, some of the, some of the conducting, and it was, it was just a really fun evening, and that's probably my highlight.
Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan.
Thank you. I also had a couple of meetings, started off with Tri-Agency, you already heard a very detailed discussion from Supervisor Howard, so I'm going to try not to repeat, other than the engagement of, regarding our broadband situation and talking with John Irwin again and bringing him back into the loop to get some greater connectivity and expanding that middle mile and using some tactics for job development, employment resources, working with small business SBDC, working with RHS, working with Tri-Agency, perhaps looking at a call center. Went to the regional transportation plan meeting, at least this meeting, it was a little more focused as to what it was supposed to be. It was an opportunity for the public to weigh in, but having said that, the public also has had a lot of opportunity to weigh in and will continue to have opportunity to weigh in at the Board of Supervisors meetings when we talk about our annual road prioritization, as well as at the local transportation commission, where we review this continually. So it was nice to see some new ideas come out rather than rehashing some of the objections to things that are already in the process. Attended the oversight board for the dismantling of the redevelopment agency. There was a decision made that will return thousands of dollars to the county on a bill that was, is being paid off as part of the disbursement mechanism for funds that are paid back to that agency now that it has been done away with. Went to, had a meeting with the airport, JPA, a few of us regarding trying to strategize on funding for the project, as well as to make sure that the project was something that would be affordable while being necessary, and also not destroying the aesthetic integrity of the project, I'm talking about the terminal phase one and phase two. Then had an airport JPA meeting where we let out the contracts, excuse me, for the requests for qualifications for phase one, which is to advertise for contractors to begin phase one for the terminal construction, which has to do with the sewer line, water line, foundation, infrastructure, apron, so we're going there. Then had a meeting with the president of the Clamath Chamber, he contacted me and wanted to talk about business development, about partnerships, what's going on in Clamath, him being fairly new, also apologizing for the last Clamath newsletter, stating that it got political by mistake, and offered a handout there, or not a handout, but a, reached out to me, I guess I should say. And then, you know, always having the meeting with constituents, but I want to highlight on a couple of things that have been commented of other supervisors here, and one, the early literacy, the Supervisor Howard brought up, extremely important, and not just focusing on how to reduce recidivism by talking about early childhood development and early literacy, you know, acknowledging without rehashing it too much that the eighteen months your vocabulary dictates whether you're going to have a reading level at third grade, which dictates whether you're going to graduate from high school or get into the juvenile justice system at some point, but there's another way to look at that, is this is economic development at its first and at its finest. Those people that do, those children that do graduate, they are the ones that go on to have jobs, to open businesses, to buy homes, to invest in your economy. This is the foundation for our economic development, and we should open our eyes that it is a positive and not something that we're trying to stop, but something we're trying to enhance. The greatest investment for infrastructure we can make is in our youngest of children and our families to support them. Had an offer, was invited to go on the paddle wheeler, got down there ten minutes early, and it left twenty minutes before I got there. So... So apparently according to weather, they took off early so didn't get that opportunity. And then of course regarding last chance grade, it is heartening to hear Supervisor Gitlin get on board with the last chant, the congressional stakeholders group of which I do sit on, that he acknowledges that we are doing it right, following a proper process, at least I think this is what I heard, and thinks that we're doing as good as we can. I think the real message there with that congressional stakeholders meeting and the congressman's going to be here next week to be at one of our meetings, is that that is the mechanism. When you talk about funding from the federal highways program, there is a hundred million dollars for the entire United States for emergencies per year. Last chance grade probably is going to be about six hundred million at it, at least to go around. So when you talk about emergency funding, emergencies are also where you only get to replace what was there. You don't even get to expand the shoulders, okay? And there's a hundred million dollars for the entire United States. So while I think we have to be cautious, number one, I'm glad to hear that we're all on board with the process because the minute somebody steps outside the process, what happens is you have groups that are inside that process that then feel empowered to submarine the project like Epic or Friends of Del Norte or, you know, some of the other, Save the Redwoods League. Because if somebody who is from the county or from the parks or somebody else steps outside the agreed upon process, then they all of a sudden say, well, and then you end up with the Willets bypass or you end up with Richardson Grove or you end up with Highway one ninety-nine, where it stops process. So, and progress. The other thing is unintended consequences. We all acknowledge what is an emergency and what should be planned from a matter of priorities. The sky is not falling. Yes, last chance is sliding, okay? And you do have to properly plan for it, but there has to be the funds available and that's part of the stumbling block. Supervisor Hemmingson works with the deal committee. I work with local transportation commission. I also work on the congressional stakeholders group. I also sit on California transportation statewide committees as appointed by the legislature. So those relationships are in place and yes, the entire community has a priority to fix last chance grade, but if this board insists that it is an emergency, the unintended consequence is the road gets closed. Caltrans will treat it as an emergency once the road is impassable, but as long as that road is passable, as scary as it is, I caution us to have a discussion within the process and not a knee-jerk reaction for an election year campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to get through this quickly. Had a NORTEC meeting, which is the Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium in Anderson. We had a little shakeup in the, I shouldn't say shakeup, the requirements. We, we changed how the makeup of the, of NORTEC was. Used to have a workforce investment board, they've changed that to a workforce development board. It's not all just about what they named it, but a little different representation. We filled all, all but three or four of those positions, so we're working on cleaning that up, but that's going pretty well. As Supervisor Finnegan said, we had a meeting with Border Coast Regional Airport Authority staff as well as veneer on the terminal project. I had an agenda review. Had a first collaboration meeting. Smith River Lions, Grant Wersko and myself are co-chairing this collaboration having to do with the Smith River National Recreation Area. We included the Forest Service, Epic, AFRC, the Talawada Nation, Elk Valley Ranch area. And this is a collaboration so that we can maybe have a little more, a few more projects in the national recreation area. I went to the fair, Del Norte County Fair Volunteer Appreciation Dinner. It's an annual thing, that was well-attended. I had a previous meeting, so I had to leave a little bit early. As Supervisor Howard noted, had a meeting with national parks and state parks on maybe some excessive enforcement activities, seemed to got that straightened out, so that's going pretty well. And then last night, I had a, kind of a user group collaborative meeting down in Eureka on roads and issues in the Forest Service. So a couple of different collaborations, hopefully moving in the same direction. I did have to pass over last chance grade in the last two weeks about six times. The first time my wife was with me, I thought she was going to go down on the floorboards. She didn't want to look out. Well, that's what she said. But anyway, she doesn't like heights all that well anyway and that first little dip that you come into, which seems to be getting bigger and bigger, is certainly, is noteworthy. And you know, and it is, you know, an important project. It does need to keep moving forward and we do need to keep pushing hard for that and it's glad to see that all the supervisors on board with that, pushing that forward as well as the early literacy programs. I mean, these are things that really, really, really need to take a lot of our effort and really happy that everyone is on board. We're all pushing in the same direction on those things, so I appreciate all your efforts. Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're going to take public comment. Is there any public comment? Members of the public may address the board on matters with, which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding matters listed on the agenda, you maybe have to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Please, come on.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Norma Williams. I'm the chapter president for the Del Norte County Employees Association, SCIU ten to one, and on behalf of employees of the Del Norte County Health and Human Services Department, I wish to present to you this petition. Over the past several months, we have had one-on-one conversations with employees, county administration, and even group meetings with staff over concerns that employees have with the management and direction of the department. It is our hope and intention that we can work together to positively resolve the issues outlined in the petition. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Next.
Morning.
Morning.
Know most of you people except for this guy. Grew up here. I work in the crab industry down in the dock for Wild Planet.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
My name's Raymond Claiborne.
Okay, Raymond.
I've been here nineteen, since nineteen sixty-one off and on. I came, I come here every year and work in the industry, then I go, you know, I'm semi-retired from Simpson. It's a part-time job. And I read in the paper, you know, that, you know, the fishermen get help, you know, the boat owners, eighty percent, I've listened today. And then, and the industry that bought, buys the crab and the nonprofit that feeds the crab to the public, but there's no help being provided for the hourly men, you know, that comes from, you know, when he, boat pulls underneath the hoist, I put it on the truck, I run a crew for Wild Planet and there's no, there's been no input about that. It's a small, you know, I make a small wage, about twelve thousand a year doing that, between eight and twelve thousand. And there's a lot of people that work in that industry, you know, for Kaido, North Coast and all these different people. It affects our community. Money comes into the community, is spent in the community, I've, you know, hear you talking about that, but there's nothing that's done for that. And a lot of guys have already run, like me, I run unemployment, you know, and I'm just wondering what has been done to address this. I went to Rural Human Services the first thing this morning and tried to get some help there. I said, what I would see, my supervisor, which is Martha McClure, he said she's in someplace else, but I see her here today, and he started wanting to pass the buck. But it's just a small, you know, thing, but it affects probably just hours alone, probably in the neighborhood of sixty, seventy thousand dollars in wages. And that's just, that's not Leon or, or any of those guys that work over there, you know, in the big dock. We work on the small dock. Now, Pack Choice doesn't worry about it because they unload fish and they do a lot of magnets, you know, they keep, Joe keeps his crew working and Albertsons, you know, they do the same thing. They got a crew that they, that, you know, that's all year round that do, because they do black cotton and all that. I just work in the crab. We don't do tuna in Crescent City. All company does tuna in Newport. So I was just wondering if you, you know, it's a small, but it helps, it helps me. I'm dressed myself and maybe, you know, some of the other guys that, that do this, they just do it, you know, as a part-time. Some of them come in off the welfare line, you know, the, not, shouldn't say welfare anymore, AFDC, that's the old logging talk, but they come off the AFDC and, you know, and they work part-time. They're sent down and it kind of gives them a little boost to go back in and do something else. You know, we work a lot of them, we interview them and put them to work if we can.
Great. I can tell you that, that I've been working fairly closely with, with Senator McGuire and Assemblymember Wood on just the exact issue that you're talking about, which is, which is what I feel for. The crewmen on the boats, they don't get a lot of attention. The crewmen that work at the docks, they don't get a lot of attention.
Not a crewman, I'm an hourly man. Crewman, crewman is a contractor.
I, I understand that, but it's, but it's, but it's those people that are not owners of permits and, and not owners of boats and, and not owners of processing companies. It's the, it's the people that, that work in the industry that are often forgotten. That's, that's what I've been trying to get across to them, extend the unemployment benefits, you know.
Maybe, maybe, you know, some kind of.
So, so I, I personally have been, been working on that. It's a very slow process and we've been working on it for a number of months now, so.
Yeah, well, they did the same thing when the salmon came in, but some of the boats shared with, with the crew, you know, when they had the salmon disaster.
Some of them did, some of them did.
And some of them didn't. And.
And that's, that's the kind of stuff that I, I don't want to see happen.
Me, I'm not, I'm not, you know, you're a boat owner and it's kind of, you know, I'm, I'm the other end of it.
Right, no, I understand that and, and I don't want to see, I don't want to see the boat owners get all the money like they did in the salmon industry. That's what I've been, I've been working very hard to get that the, that the, the employees that are working for the fish companies, the employees, the vendors.
Contractors on the boat.
Exactly. All of the, all of the people that seem to be forgotten in the process, I want to, trying to make sure that that gets addressed, so that's what I'm working for. But it's a slow process and it's a long process.
I listened today and the tests aren't good all over.
No, they're not.
And, and I don't know if they're going to open it.
They may not.
Yeah, it seems to, you know, the, I see that a couple of boats are going back to Dragon, I think your boat is.
It probably is, yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm pretty well aware of what's on down there. Worked on a couple of boats. Okay, well, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
When do I come back and check in?
Well, you can, you can check with me anytime and I'll, I'll try to give you an update as far as I got, but it's, like I say, it's not a, it's a, it's a fairly slow process and we have to get through it and I don't know that you'll.
Seems like, you know, they're having, you know, that, okay, I'll check back next week.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thanks for your words.
Mr. Enscore.
Sheriff Hemmingson, members of the board of supervisors, I just have a, just a real simple thing that I'd like to share with you. You know how it is, I guess I didn't tell my name, Blake Enscore, a member of the city council and city resident. We get a lot of information that ends up being second and third hand, but when you get something that concerns you, especially from a community standpoint, in, in my case for the city's standpoint, I just think we need to think about these things and talk about them together and if we can talk about them ahead of time as opposed to them becoming real issues. Some of you may have heard the rumor mill regarding the downtown Redwood National State Park Visitor Center closing, maybe not this year, but into the, into the future. And I just want to share with you from a city standpoint, that would be a devastating impact on our downtown. We're not talking about a hundred people, we're talking, not talking about a thousand people, we're talking about thousands and tens of thousands and even possibly hundreds of thousands of people who come into that visitor center every year. While I know it might be a benefit to Supervisor Howard's district if all of that became in Hauchi, that doesn't benefit our community as a whole. It would have a devastating effect on downtown. Downtown's already struggling as it is. The idea that it would boost our visitor center is really small thinking and it really doesn't address the bigger problem. So as you guys have influence and as you even consider whatever we consider down the road, I'm just asking you to think about downtown. We are one community. I am certainly committed to that and I think you guys know that and I want to see the best for all of us, so thank you for your time.
Great. Blake, I, I would like to comment first, Supervisor McClure, if I could. It's good that you bring that up, Blake, because we have Supervisor Howard and I have had these discussions in our two-by-twos with national parks and state parks. And I, I'm going to invite you to the next two-by-two meeting that we have.
Thank you.
And we're going to pick this subject up and we're going to talk to them. They've got some issues and maybe if we can resolve those issues.
That'd be awesome.
Maybe we can get this taken care of because I, I'm behind you a hundred percent.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we can all work together. I think we're proving that.
Supervisor McClure.
Yes, I just want to say that from the Redwood Park Association that it, it was discussed and it is slated to happen. The goal is that it will be, that it will be open from June through September and then they'll close the downtown one for the, all of the winter and leave the Hauchi one open for winter, you know, and like my concern is that there's a lot of people that are 101 drivers.
Yeah.
That would like to do some stuff at the park and for them to go to a visitor's center in, in Hauchi is probably not going to happen and we're not going to be able to capture them. It's also, I believe, going to be detrimental to the RPA itself because of the number of sales that go through that, that center and it's slated to happen next year. It's right on, and there was little, and then the other piece is the visitor's center in Oric. There's going to be a new one, but it's going to be, it's going to be at the old mill site and the one that's currently there is going to be removed and the new one that's going to be at the mill site is going to be much smaller. And so it's, I think that if, if we could possibly start formulating a letter to Huffman saying, please, put the brakes on this because part of the promise of the Redwood National Park was there would be a presence in Del Norte County and in Crescent City itself. I mean, the visitor's center was specific to be built here. So I think we should remind the congressman that he could possibly remind the superintendent of this position.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Yeah, Supervisor McClure, I'm glad you brought that up. When I used to sit on the two-by-two for the state parks and also the Mill Creek Advisory, this has been a few years, it was tried before and the threat was out there, not only when they went to Awbell, but when they built down there in Oric. And it was brought up at that time that, that some of the enabling legislation and the intent, the congressional intent of formation of the Redwood State and National Parks was there would be a presence in Crescent City for their offices. And so that was the hammer we threw down then and they stopped. So I suggest, of course, it was Congressman Thompson at the time, but let's revisit those old minutes again, it's there.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
And Kylie, would you set up a two-by-two with parks? We're going to have it a little bit earlier than what we normally do. Check with Supervisor Howard's schedule and my schedule and we'll put something together with them because I think we need to address this right away and get ahold of Mr. Enscore.
Sheriff Hemmingson?
Yes.
See, Council Blake Enscore, could I ask you a quick, one more quick question? We're, we're here today and on item fifteen, we have an opportunity to write such a letter. I'm not so sure why the letter shouldn't go directly to state and national parks if this is, they are driving this. Would this be helpful to you today, for this board to agendize this?
Yeah, probably. I, I, my biggest concern is, is we need to all be at the table and since there's obviously been some discussion about this that the city has not been involved in, given the impact, especially financially and economic impact to our downtown, that, that's my biggest concern is that, is that we're all brought to the table and that we work, work through this. There's obviously factors that I don't understand, but I can't understand something if, if we're not. There's obviously factors that I don't understand, but I can't understand something if, if we're not brought to the table to discuss it. And, you know, I just got a piece of the information from, from Supervisor Finnegan that I wasn't aware of that I think is pertinent to the discussion, so.
Well, there's another group that I used to sit on that I no longer do and I think, I think Supervisor Gitlin does, I'm not sure who else, is the IGRC. And the IGRC was expanded to go beyond just the city and the county to include the parks, the fair, the harbor, et cetera. So that would be a benefit.
And I sit on the IGRC and, and we, we usually have the city and the county and maybe the school district shows up for that, which is unfortunate because i- if that was functioning like it was designed by bringing all these entities together quarterly to address things that concern one another, we probably would have worked through some of this stuff better, but you can't make somebody show up for a meeting.
It's very disappointing to hear that they hadn't engaged the city at all.
It is.
With their, with their moving. I mean, we were just briefly notified. It wasn't like they wanted to have a discussion with us and you guys should have been the first ones that they discussed this with, not us. And, and I think you need to be at the table and I want to set that meeting up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to find fault, I want to find solutions. And I think that, I appreciate all of you, I know that that's what you guys are trying to do too.
Let's take a look at it, thank you. And then if we need to, if we come up with something that we need to go higher up and write a letter.
Together jointly, I think that'd be awesome.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you. Any other public comment?
Victoria Dickey, I live in the county in Supervisor Finnegan's district. I'm going to bring up something that's kind of old news and new news. I am still one who believes that the Solid Waste Authority should be at best revamped. I believe the JPA should be kept in place. However, I believe that the, that the Solid Waste Authority itself should be dissolved. If it's not dissolved, at least it should be stripped of its ability to make ordinances and all the ordinances that are currently in place should be repealed. And I believe that the county should make its own ordinances, update them. You have ordinances that are in place. The city has ordinances that are in place. The state of California has the laws that are in place. And with the Solid Waste Authority making ordinances also, it means that if you live in the county, you deal with the state, you deal with the county and you deal with the Solid Waste Authority ordinances. If you live in the city, it's the state, the city and the county ordinances. I don't quite understand why I need at least three public agencies to deal with the trash in my three-dollar garbage cans. I do want to also compliment you on the exchange that I saw in the very last speaker's comments. One of the things that's quite frustrating is you come up and you talk to people and all that happens is you see people and you may or may not have questions about what's said, but comments are always made later, so you can't respond to them, you can't whatever. I found it very refreshing what you just did and I would hope that you'd continue to do that when people feel strongly enough to come up and talk to you about things. They have a reason and one of the things that I do appreciate is that at least when I come here, especially with Supervisor Hemmingson, he was the very first person who was in charge of this body when I spoke, he went way out of his way to make sure I could speak. I did everything wrong procedurally and he allowed me to speak. I believe that the majority of the people on this board would do the same thing. One other comment that I would like to make, which is again on a different subject and I have twenty-one seconds. I did not believe that it was appropriate for people to attack Supervisor McClure in the manner that they did. Many people know that I totally disagree with most of the things that you say and do, but I didn't think that that was appropriate and if I had been the one who had done that, I'd apologize. I will apologize for people who don't know enough too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period and you'll have an opportunity to speak on items as they come up on the agenda. We have a presentation, I think, by the city regarding the proposed new consumption-based sewer rate structure. Eric, were you going to speak on that?
All right, thank you, Chair Hemmingson, members of the board. Yes, we have a, have a brief PowerPoint that I'm hoping is, is coming up right now, but I appreciate the board making time for this very important item. This, this item is not just a city item, this is a, this is really a community item and so that's where we wanted to come, speak to the board, try to make sure you were informed on exactly what was going on and inform also the residents that are, that are in your districts. As you know, this is a, is a regional wastewater treatment plant. The treatment plant serves the businesses and the residents that are located within the city. They also serve residences, residences and businesses that are within the county. In fact, two-thirds of the residential customers are actually located outside of the city limits. So this truly is a, a regional plant. Briefly, I'll talk a little bit about the history. We haven't, I haven't just decided to look at this, this isn't a new issue. This is an issue that this community has struggled with for decades, as you're all aware. We were under a cease and assist order that was imposed on us in nineteen ninety-seven. That meant no new connections, no development. The, also in the late nineties, the, the SEDs came out, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, that listed an acronym that, that we have strived to, strive to complete, which is, has one ninety-nine dot com. The S in that stands for sewer. And that was originally developed in, in the late nineties because we were under cease and desist order and they knew that in order for us to grow, in order for us to, to develop like we needed to develop, we needed to do something about the sewer treatment plant. And that's when the city started to embark on the improvement project. The improvement project first started in two thousand and three and that's when we developed a comprehensive facilities plan in which outlined what we needed to do for the next twenty years. The first part of that was meeting water quality standards. So the reason we were under cease and desist order is because we weren't meeting water quality standards and we were starting to receive fines in the tens of thousands of dollars. So the, the first part of that facilities plan was the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. That was started in two thousand and seven and completed in two thousand and eleven. This project replaced some key infrastructure in the plant, redid the electrical systems, redid the control systems and added an MBR. This was not a new plant, this was simply an upgrade to an existing plant. If you tour the plant today, you will see that many of the, the critical facilities that are located within the plant are still structures that were built in nineteen fifty-eight. So this definitely wasn't a complete tear-down and rebuild. This was a thought-out upgrade to the plant so that we could add the necessary components to meet water quality while still maintaining the value that we needed to, to do for the rate pairs. The, in two thousand and eleven, like I said, the cease and desist order was lifted. Two thousand and twelve, we now know our operating costs of the plant. We now know what it takes to actually maintain this plant in the manner that we need to maintain this asset so that we do get the life out of it that we need. And we also know what we need to do as far as planning for the future. Putting all those things in place, we now found ourselves in a structural deficit. The city could not pay the bills that they needed to pay while still maintaining the plant. So with that, we assembled a financial team, which consisted of the Willdan Financial Services Group. We had a financial consultant who was also our interim city finance director, Susan Mayer, who has, who has wealth of experience in this manner. We enlisted the help of Kennedy Jinks to evaluate our facilities plan going into the future. And then we had myself, we had our finance director and our utilities manager and city manager also on the team in order to try to address these key issues. So with that, let me grab a mouse real quick. So hopefully, okay. So I still don't have control of it. So, so with that, we now knew that we needed to complete a revenue sufficiency study and a rate study so that we could have the information incorporated into a financial plan to where we can meet the needs of today as well as in the future. So that's where Willdan Financial started to gather all this information. They gathered the operation and maintenance costs, they gathered our capital improvement plan, they gathered the, the debt service information that we had. They put it into this revenue analysis, which is the first phase. And they came back to this and I was in San Francisco when I received the call and they said that you are going to need a two-hundred-and-fifty-two percent rate increase over the next nine years. And at that point, we said, okay, let's, let's look at other options because that is not going to be feasible for this community. So amongst staff, we knew that was not a realistic possibility. So what are the other options? What are the other components that have gone into this so that we can try to structure this in a manner that is feasible for this community? We're not a rich community, we have very low median household income. These are things that we take seriously and the city council takes seriously and we do everything possible to try to keep these rates down. So, one of the big components of this was the debt service. It was paying for that project that now allowed us to meet the water quality standards. That was a forty-three million dollar project, it was financed two-point-four percent over thirty years. Good project, good interest rate, long-term, you know, in, in a sense, that low of an interest rate is a good structured debt service. But nonetheless, this community couldn't afford it. So we went to the state and we said, we, we can't afford this anymore, is there any, any way that you could help us? And so we put together, put together the plan, we wrote them the letters, we went before the State Water Resources Control Board and they contemplated reducing that loan from two-point-four percent down to zero percent. Now, this isn't something that they take lightly either because once they do, for one, they have to think about setting the precedent. So they hired an independent financial firm out of Colorado. They looked at all the city's finances, they evaluated the situation and came back to us with really an unprecedented move. And that was to reduce that interest rate from two-point-four percent down to zero percent. That saves fifteen-point-four million dollars for this community over the next twenty-six years as well as restructuring our debt service payment. So this year we'll pay one-point-one million, next year we pay one-point-two million, all the way up to one-point-seven million or where it holds steady from that point out. So what that does is it allows us to, to take this structural, the structural debt that we have, where we're in the structural deficit and we're able to rebound from it. So instead of saying needing a large rate increase right now in order to, to meet this financial plan, we're able to do small increases over the next four years, which is what's in this plan, to meet those debt service requirements. The other thing we looked at is grants. How can we get as many grants as we possibly can so that we can fund these needed capital improvement projects? City's been very successful in obtaining these grants. We received a one-point-three million dollar grant for Second Street Sewer, which was completed. Today, actually, we're commencing the B Street Sewer Project, which is a one-point-four million dollar CDPG grant. We have, and we did, did a joint application with the county for a lift station grant and we received eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand and a Prop eighty-four grant with the county. We have nine-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars that we received from a Prop fifty grant. This is all within the last couple of years, so we've received four-point-four million dollars in grants. Again, trying to, trying to keep the low, the rates as low as possible. However, in looking at that, there is still a rate increase that is needed. So, within this financial plan is a five percent rate increase for the next four years. And that's, I say rate increase, really it's a revenue increase. Because as part of this, and we'll get into this a little bit in the, into the future on this PowerPoint, is it's a restructuring of a rate structure, which is also why we wanted to come and inform the board of exactly what we're doing. So it's not just a five percent across the board. This is a restructuring so that it goes to a consumption-based rate structure. And that really is a more equitable rate structure. It's a rate structure that a lot of utilities are going through, going to all across the country. Basically what it means on the residential side, instead of a flat rate where the person pays the same rate no matter how much water they use, it actually is based on how much you use. So how much you put into the system is how much you're going to pay for. So, we talked a little bit about the revenue study, what goes into that. The next phase in a rate study process is the cost of service analysis. And that's where they look at the different components. So, not all sewers created equal. Your sewer from your restaurants is more than what your residential sewers is, more than what your, say, professional offices are. So that's where they look at the loading. We use EPA model for the loading and that's where we applied it to the classes. Then you have your rate design analysis, where that's where we look at the consumption-based type rate structure. So, and this is, like I said, this is the consultant's PowerPoint and he was definitely a click-happy consultant when he did this. So we'll just run through it. So that's how we get to our, our total sewer revenue requirements, which is, looks at the collection system, it looks at lift stations, it looks at treatment and it looks at the admin costs as well. It takes the flow that, that a customer might give to us, it also combines that with the strength classification and that's how we get to the rates. And then that is then allocated to each of the different customer classes. So the results, like we talked about, five percent revenue increase over the next four years is what's required for us to meet the, the needs of the community. The different rate options that were placed before the council was option one, which is a change to the rate structure, which is to go to that consumption-based rate, which is a lot more equitable type rate structure. Or option two, which is just to keep the existing rate structure and apply five percent across the board. City council decided to go with the consumption-based rate structure. This is a, a table that shows the rates and what they're going to. These are the different, different classifications that we have where you're looking at, you have your residential rates, you have your light commercial rates, you have your heavy commercial rates and your multifamily.
What's inside, outside?
So that is, that's inside the city limits or outside the city limits. And you'll actually see that inside the city limits is a higher rate than what is outside the city limits. And that is due to the collection system component of it. So if you're in the county, you pay your collection system component on an assessment. And so you pay that once a year on your taxes. If you're in the city, you don't have that assessment and you pay it once a month based on, based on the rate structure. A light commercial is going to be your offices, your, your light commercial type of businesses, heavy is your restaurants. So, customer impact, this is the, this is the table that, that really was, was telling to us and this is the information that we're trying to get out there. You use, you pay for what you use is, is really the, the gist of this particular rate structure. So here you see in this column, in the fourth column over, this is cumulative number of customers served. The first is the number of hundred of cubic feet used. So when you look at one-hundred cubic feet, that is seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons is how much that is. So you see that by the time we get to about fifty percent of the bills issued or fifty percent of the customers, which would be right in here, they use about three and a half cubic, hundred cubic feet or three-hundred-and-fifty cubic feet. That is where, that is also the break in which you see the change to actually, the people that don't use very much, they're going to end up paying less on their bill with this rate structure. The people that use more are going to pay more. That's where fifty percent of the residential customers will actually end up paying less on their sewer bills after this rate and structure is imposed. That's, that's the gist of the rate study, the financial plan that was incorporated. But to summarize, you know, it's, nobody likes rate increases. Nobody likes, you know, if you're sitting on the city council, it's not an easy thing to do. If you're a rate payer, obviously you don't like paying higher rates. But this is definitely a needed, a needed component to our community. It's one that when you're in my position as Public Works Director for the city, this treatment plant falls underneath my purview. It's my responsibility to make sure that we operate and maintain this to the level that it needs to be maintained. It's just like if you have a car or your house, you need to do those maintenance items to get the longevity out of the asset. And that's really what this plan does. It, it not only looks at what we've accomplished and what, everything that we've tried to do to restructure that rate and get to the position that we're in, but it also looks to the future, which is the most important thing. Looks to the future in maintaining what we have, it looks to the future in trying to meet the regulations, which are never, are never decreasing. In fact, the regulations have regulations and then it says, no backsliding, meaning they don't get any easier. So as we look into the future, we're, we're, we have an eye on that. And it's, and it's putting this community in the right place so that we can move forward, whether it be with the development or even just meeting the water quality standards that are before us. And I commend the council for, for taking an action to do this, to giving us the resources that we're going to need to maintain this and I appreciate the board's time.
Perfect. Hang on just a second, I'm sure there's questions. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Eric, that was, that was great. Really appreciate your time in addressing this issue. My question refers back to some of the consultants in addressing the key issues that you brought up. When they did the studies and the various studies that came back for review by the city council, did that review include efficiencies within the current system? Meaning, looking at levels of personnel it takes to maintain the system, et cetera, et cetera, to look at savings and costs that could potentially take place within the facility?
You know, that is something that, that we did look at as part of that thirty-year capital improvement plan. Didn't have benchmarks to try to, try to look at that. We're always trying to optimize what we do. Personnel costs are never easy, treatment plant classifications and the regulations that go along with the operator licenses that they have to have are, are not getting easier. And in fact, that is, is one of the, the areas that we struggle with as a, just as a community is to be able to recruit and retain licensed operators because they're really turning into the prima donnas of the, you know, of the wastewater world to say the least. into the prima donnas of the wastewater world, to say the least. And so to try to recruit them and keep them is a struggle. But they did look at some of those benchmarks, and we're on point with those at this point.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you, Eric. I want to make clear, you're talking at sewer, not water rates here, because I know that we get a combined bill, at least I and the city. So, could you put up that graph again? Yeah. Explain to me, within the city, why the sewer rate is higher than in the county? Can you explain? Is this the inside and outside of the previous one?
Let's see, I'll have to fall back.
Yeah, all right. So, go ahead.
So really, that comes down to the collection system costs. So, what these rates represent for the county is just the cost to actually treat the sewage at the wastewater treatment plant. The county customers are then in a CSA, or in an assessment district, in which they'll get assessed a certain amount every year to pay for their collection system portion. That's the pipes that are in the ground that actually convey it to the treatment plant. So that's in the county.
Okay, so my question would be, the infrastructure, that obviously, the county's farther away from the city sewer water treatment plant than the city is. Who pays for that infrastructure? When I see your crews out there working on pipes, sewer pipes out in the county, is that a city borne expense, or is the city paying for that?
So the city operates and maintains the sewer system throughout the city and the county. The county owns that collection system within the county jurisdiction. So when you see our crews out there, we have an agreement with the CSA, and we record our time as such, and then the county receives a quarterly invoice, I believe, for those services.
All right. Now, the other issue, of course, is, as you said before, we're a challenged community financially, and we have a lot of poor people here. What provision, what provision do we have to hold down costs on people who can ill-afford these 5% increases? And I've taxed my own brain, and what can we do to assist those who are challenged, simply don't have the money?
You know, this is an area that has come up, and, you know, us as staff, we've researched it. There's not a lot that you can do to subsidize any one group, whether it be, say, the, you know, the senior population, or low income. You know, there's laws that are out there, and 218 is very clear on those issues, you can't subsidize those. So unfortunately, our hands is tied as far as a rate study goes, and trying to subsidize any one group.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yeah, thanks, Eric, for the presentation. And somebody who's been involved with CSA 1 and 2 for the years, and the complaints of the bonds and whatnot, I'm glad you brought that to light for those that weren't aware of it. My question, though, is, when you start going 1.1, 1.2, 1.7 for another 25 years, obviously, it's more than $30 million to pay it off. So, what is the life expectancy that you're billing towards? And what is the, what percentage goes towards replacement and maintenance?
So, yeah, I don't have the exact percentage in front of me, but basically, the life expectancy of the plant ranges, depending on the equipment that you're talking about. So, and that's where it was important to have this 30-year financial plan. So, when you're talking concrete structures on the treatment plant, you know, that has a life expectancy of, say, 50 years. If it's more of a mechanical or a pump, you're down in the five-year range. And so it really is all over the board, which is why we wanted to have this 30-year plan, so we can start anticipating these costs as they come up.
So, part of this is, I hate to use the word sinking fund or something, or reserves, to address those issues when they pop up after the 30 years?
Exactly. And it's, you know, and it's also, it's funding of a major maintenance, is what we call some of those. So it's not just new capital items that we want to improve the treatment plant with, it's also maintaining what we have.
Well, just support what you're doing, we need it for economic development, vitality of our community, and our kids, and seniors.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, Eric, if you can go to the last slide, that, yeah, that shows an increase, and I don't know, there's not a very, I guess there's not very many people that are up there in that.
Just more John's?
Yeah, well, no, more John's. But when you take somebody's bill and raise it 151%, and they're in business, is there jeopardy of putting that business out of business? I mean...
So, these are, this is residential customer, and so the table represents residential.
Well, these are all residential?
These are residential.
Oh, okay.
So your commercial will be affected a little bit differently, and the percentages change. It's not going to be as dramatic as what you see here. So residential, and really what this table was designed to reflect, is the fact that we're going from a flat rate, where everybody pays the same, to consumption-based.
Okay.
Now, on the business side, they've always been consumption-based.
Okay.
So there will be an increase, but it really depends on, again, how much you use, and then it's all those strength factors that go into it.
So they're already on a consumption base, so theirs would be 5% across the board? Is that what you're saying?
It's not necessarily a 5%, but it's in that range.
Okay.
And a lot of it was the independent analysis that this consultant did, applying those strength factors to each of the businesses, so...
So, within the business community, are there things that they can do to reduce? I mean, I know they could use less. But I mean, are there ways that they can reduce their...
Obviously, you know, water conservation's going to be the direct metric that affects this. The other thing is possibly an irrigation meter. You know, if they do have landscape that they're using, they can put in an irrigation meter, because that, really, that water doesn't go into the sewer system. So if they put that in, then that would be taken off of their sewer bill.
So then what does that do to your payback schedule? If, I mean, if all the businesses, and all of a sudden, and then, the community is probably going to be a little more aware of their bill going up one and a half times, and probably going to say, whoa, wait a minute here, maybe I need to cut back. So what's that going to do to your payback process as people get more efficient? Is that going to be an issue?
No, it's, well, it's a very good question. And it's one, as, you know, we went to this structure, our finance director was very much involved in, because, you know, it's her job to make sure that we do have the revenue that we need to operate and maintain the utility. So with this, and especially, it's not only on the business side, but it's also especially on the residential side. Because instead of using really as much as they wanted, and still getting the same amount of revenue, now, the less they use, the less they pay. So there definitely is a conservation factor. So a 10% conservation factor was figured in to this particular financial plan. And then on an annual basis, that'll be something that we look at, to make sure that the revenues are where we need them to be.
Is the city going to embark on some sort of grant program for installing low-flush toilets and fixtures, even in the county, to help reduce? Anybody within the sewer districts?
You know, the city has had programs like that in the past. I think it was actually through CDBG is how they funded it. Currently, we don't have a program, but the state is offering a program for low-flow toilets and fixtures. And it's really part of the water conservation effort that the state is putting forth.
Besides the rate structure going forward, and the monthly charges that will flow out of this, specific to business, has there been any discussion about when new business comes in, the hookup fee specifically, and waiving that? Oftentimes, the biggest hurdle for new businesses, whether it's a restaurant or something else that has a very fixed budget for that startup, what consideration is the city given in this conversation to maybe waive or adjust those fees to incentivize new businesses to locate here that may have trouble with this monthly bill until they're established?
You know, it's definitely a discussion that we have had, it's a discussion that council has brought up as well. So currently, right now, the city has a financial plan, or a financial agreement that they offer to any potential new hookups, in which they can finance those connection fees over a five-year period. So that's the current plan that's in place. This, again, is one of those issues that we'll continue to evaluate, and try to help businesses where we can. That being said, we can't waive the fee because of the 218, but there are certain ways that we can structure it.
Yeah, so, and maybe there's possibility you could stretch that out longer than five-year period, to make the payments a little bit less for...
There's...
I'm just saying.
There is.
I think we did this, I think we did that here just recently, and we gave options to go out farther, so that that doesn't become such an impact to startup or business.
No, and I would agree with that. You know, the business came, that would be something the staff could take to the council, and there's language within the current financing plan, in which the council could adopt different terms.
Agreed. Anything else from board members? Thanks, Eric, so much. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on that presentation?
Victoria Dickey, I have a question. Have you, you pay water and sewer on behalf of the county, like for this building and others, right? Do you know how it affects you? I mean, do you have rates? Do you know whether yours are going to go up or go down, and how it's figured? I just think that you should, you know, consider that, and then if you can vote on it, there is an election called 218 election coming up. So, what I look at on the chart, any rate that I'm paying is going to go down, but I still don't think it's a good idea, because if government can, it will. The article in the newspaper basically said, "We need more money." That's all I've heard this morning, and we're going to lower your rates. Huh? You figure that out, I can't.
Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, again, Eric, for your presentation. We are going to go back to a presentation, or a, just a brief report of what our county administrative officer has been doing.
Over the last two weeks, I was invited to speak with the Noon Rotary, which, it's been a few years since they invited me in, so I got to see some new faces. It's interesting that there's a lot of younger people in that Noon Rotary group, and glad to see some of those are people who have come back to the community that are from here. On a sadder note, it was right after Jordan Kecri's passing, and he's a member of Rotary, and they did a, you know, they did take some time to acknowledge Jordan, and I was able to attend his celebration of life after that. I had a meeting with the judges over a couple of different issues, and contracts, different department meetings, had a meeting with the superintendent of schools, and the chief probation officer. Went to the tri-agency meeting, have been trying to assist tri-agency where we can in regards to getting them back on their feet and in a more proactive role. At that meeting, I was asked to make contact with John Irwin in regards to the broadband issues, which I have, and as of yesterday evening, he's given me some data and some information that I'll be able to bring back to tri-agency for some consideration and possible direction. Attended the interviews for the Assistant Health and Human Services Director, met with the Humboldt Del Norte Film Commission, and had the city-county two-by-two, which has already been reported, but was very encouraged with the overall attitude and ability to sit down and talk about some significant issues that we can partner on, and come up with some solutions. And also attended the meeting with Fish and Wildlife and the Rock Tribe with Supervisor Howard last night. It was an interesting meeting, and hopefully, as the guides are able to get some information together, we'll be able to sit down and come up with a reasonable solution.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
I'd like to pull item 2.
Okay, we're going to poll item 2, and we're going to poll number 6.
Men, my motion to approve the consent agenda minus numbers 2 and 6.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Any more discussion? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. We're going to take number 6 first. You want to discuss that?
Yes, I just had some questions that, are any of these properties Pacific Shore properties? Because I was wondering if there are any of these properties that could be potential mitigation wetland stuff?
Yes, there are several that are Pacific Shores. They're the parcels 107s and 108s.
Because I, so in the past, we've held those.
If, they need to be part of the mitigation process with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and purchased through a Chapter 8 sale. They have to be approved by you through the public auction, and then that entity can come forward and request to purchase them through the Chapter 8.
Okay, I guess I'm kind of confused that, that if they're ready to purchase, but I was just wondering if, if they're not ready to purchase, historically, didn't we take control of the county?
Yes, I notified Susan of these going up for auction, just sort of as a 4011, if you will, that they're coming forward. Whether or not they'll sell, I don't know. But, yeah, it might be a good idea to hold off on those ones.
We may want to hang on to them.
We've already purchased all the properties that we need, haven't we?
Well, who knows?
Who knows if we ever do?
And that was, that's only a portion of it, because the discussion we had was to start forming an infrastructure bank. But I thought, as a matter of process, first, we approve that they are eligible to go up for auction, but by policy, this board has said to not offer those to the public until a governmental entity has an opportunity to purchase.
Correct. I'm just making sure that that's the one. And then the other properties that I had in question, I had the, for me, I would like us to set aside and remain in control
Yes.
of the Pacific Shores properties. And then the other property that I was looking at was at the end of Fifth Street, which is a Macam Peep out of Arcata property.
Yeah.
Is that the Heinz Safeway? Is that, what property is that?
I haven't been out there in several years. That particular one went onto my list, because by law, I have to offer it for tax sale once every five years. I know that there's still some nuisance abatement liens and water issues.
So it is the brownfield that I'm thinking about?
It is, yeah. It's all the back to Maripete property out there. And it's been in default since the 80s, and that's why the figure is so high. It's been offered for sale a couple times with no interest, obviously.
Okay, because that one is the property that I always dreamed could be baseball fields and soccer fields, and a sports complex.
Yeah, I did send an email out to Jay, and just gave him a 4011 as well, that this one's going up for auction, and I don't know if it's, if you're interested in it as the county.
I don't know, it's just, because I know that sometimes brownfield, if you're not doing a lot of digging, you can seal stuff up.
So, that property, obviously, has been up before, and has a considerable debt on it, and has not been picked up because of that reason. We have looked, and we partnered with the city, trying to do an application for the ballfields, and we were denied. It's still available, it would require an entity to actually go through that Chapter 8 process, and purchase those back from the, essentially, the people. And so I would anticipate you're going to see this, this it. And as far as the action in regards to the Pacific Shores lots, the board has taken direct action on those once they've gone up, then they've directed staff to work with the treasurer tax collector to poll those.
So that directive is still intact, so we don't vote on it separately, or do we...
I would ask that you do that directly, to have, go through the process, and then have staff work with the treasurer tax collector. It's been done multiple times.
Right.
It really wasn't a standing order, it was an action taken each time.
You're welcome.
So, motion?
He has a question on...
Yes, Supervisor.
You're just addressing...
This is just number 6, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we approve number, item number 6 on the consent agenda.
Is that removing the Pacific Shores?
Well, I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought I would need an amending motion. I would need to do that first, and then move to withdraw the Pacific Shores properties.
How about if you would just... How about if I seconded your motion, if you would amend to give staff direction to remove those, negotiate?
I just want, if you're going to remove them, then the Chapter 8 sale can't be started until you approve it as a public auction. It's sort of a catch-22, you have to be prepared to come forward as a nonprofit or public agency to purchase those prior to the sale in May. So whether or not the airport authority is prepared to purchase those before that time...
This is the county going to take?
Okay, any entity, then, that's willing to take those before the date of the sale.
Right, but we can take them without a cost.
No.
You would have to...
But can't we remove them from the sale?
You can remove them from the sale now.
Right.
But I would have to come before you, once again, to request that it be approved for a public auction before the county or any entity can come in and purchase them.
Okay, so we.
So we have a couple processes.
So I guess I'm.
We have to identify funds before we should allow them to be put up for auction?
Yes.
Okay. So then, I think the motion should probably be to approve the list minus any of the Pacific Shores properties.
And then we can talk about that process later on.
Okay, so that would be my amended motion.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Good, I'm glad, no.
And that is a second?
Yes.
Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board for any additional comments. Anybody? Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Did we get a motion in a second?
Yes.
Yeah, we're.
Could you clarify on the second? Thank you.
Yeah, the motion is to approve the sale minus the Pacific Shores properties.
Okay. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now, on to item number two, which I have to recuse myself. So Supervisor Finnegan, if you'll take over.
Who's the vice chair?
Oh, who is the vice chair? Oh, Howard, I'm sorry.
You're so used to two of us leaving.
Thank you. The reason I pulled this item from the agenda is I was contacted by a constituent. They had some questions on it and more specific to the detail that came out in the board report. And so I was hoping that Chief Probation Officer Raymond could kind of expand a little bit about what's taking place, and then I could kind of address some of these constituent concerns before we move forward with this proposal.
Absolutely. Good morning. Paxton Patterson is a program that my assistant chief, Katrina Jackson, has been looking at for quite some time, probably two and a half years. It's a vocational education program. The company is based back in the Midwest, East Coast, and was originally a conglomeration of a building supply company and an education company. What they've done is they've put together a whole host of different modules that you can bring in and teach primarily juveniles. And that's what we'll be using it for here. The intention is to take our youth that are incarcerated in juvenile hall that are there for longer periods of time, so 30 days or more, and place them into this program as part of that time that they're incarcerated so they can develop some of these vocational skills. Hopefully, with the idea that we give them some marketable, saleable skill sets as they get towards turning 18, 17, 18, 19 years old. Eventually, once we get the program up and running, what we'd like to do is make some contacts within the local business community as well. And hopefully, I don't know that we do a mentorship or something like that, but have those connections there so the folks in the community are aware of these youth that are developing these skill sets. Right now, we're looking at 10 different modules. Off the top of my head, I can't recall all of them. But things like framing, siding, roofing, insulation, drywall, painting, those are all I can come up with right now. So the contract gives us, provides us a space to do this program in. We've looked at a couple different options. One was actually using it in the juvenile, juvenile hall so we wouldn't have to transport youth. It wouldn't have worked well. We were looking at one of the classrooms. It's just not a good setup for that at all. We looked at another option with some buildings that we thought might be available to us from the school district, and that fell through. When that happened, I went soliciting, basically. I went to one of the real estate agents in town and said, "Do you have any ideas? This is, this is what we're looking for. Do you have any ideas?" And so we were connected with Ambrose at that point. And what we're looking at is a section of their old fab shop. And that would provide us the space we need to set up the machinery and the tools, the equipment to run the program.
So let me get, first by saying it's a pretty cool and groovy program. I think those kind of things are great to do. The point of the constituent concerns revolves around the way that the discussion, clarification was phrased specific to, you've just mentioned that Dell Nord County juveniles that are specifically in incarceration, 30 years or longer. But you also state secondarily to those youth who have been granted probation and tertiaryly to at-risk youth being allowed access to this program. The constituent concerns revolve around, I guess, co-mingling, for lack of a better term, different levels of folks in the juvenile justice system. And so I hope in some way today you could help address or maybe alleviate those concerns because we know when you take a different level of offender and maybe co-mingle an at-risk youth, there could be potential for some problems.
Yes, absolutely. You're absolutely correct.
So how would that be dealt with, I guess, to alleviate some of the concerns?
The, the primary targeted youth, the ones incarcerated in the hall, those will be, basically, they'll be running through the program by themselves. We can't, we're not going to combine youth who aren't in custody and those who are. For one, that's privileged information. And so we're not going to co-mingle those groups at all. The secondary level of that, those on probation, we've got several different types of probation from informal up to formal probation. There's three classifications. 602, which is formal, 725, which is informal, 601, which is also informal. That's even sometimes dealing with trinity and at-risk behavior. So there's different levels and types of probation. As we roll out the program, we're really going to have to play it by ear in some respect as to who we incorporate into that with our primary goal of taking those youth who are on probation, who we have direct ties to. You know, we're answering to the judge in many respects as far as what their case plans are, what we're trying to do with them and their families. And this type of program would feed directly into what some of our goals would be. I don't know that we would co-mingle probation youth with at-risk youth. And that would be, one, it would be a stretch because at that point, you're, depending on how you would define that, we could be reaching outside of the parameters of what we actually do. So that would have to be a partnership in many respects with other agencies like the school district, county office of ed, something like that. That's down the road. We just need to get our feet under the ground right now and deal with the kids that are directly under our care. See how that works out. See which kids are appropriate, which might not, might not be, which have the time on probation or, you know, have different things going on in their lives that would make a program like this appropriate for them versus somebody who is still really involved in the programs at school or possibly working, things like that. So trying to figure out how we can benefit them but not overload them at the same time. That's something that we're going to have to piece together as we go, really. I, I don't know if that answers. I can expound some.
It does. It kind of gets to that, you've at least thought about how that issue may be addressed. And maybe the, the point next time we're developing these reports for the board, if we can be thinking about how that might build into that presentation of that report, it might help offset some of these concerns that, that roll into us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, if we can address that. Comments from the board?
I think this is a great opportunity, and I don't want to see someone else grab that property. I support it. I'd like to make that motion now to authorize the chair to sign the lease between the county of Dell Nord Probation Department and Ambrose for space to operate the Paxton Patterson Building and Schools Program as requested by the chief probation officer.
Second.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Howard?
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you, vice chair. Sorry about that. A mix-up. Okay, so we're going to move on to budget transfers.
Move to approve. Budget transfer 0106 and 0201.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any public comment on these budget transfers? Seeing no public comment, then I'm going to bring it back to the board. These budget transfers are close to $2 million by the time we get done with them. So Kylie, would you pull a vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair, just in response to your $2 million, it was all's we were doing is this, the, the next step in following through with actions that we took at our last meeting regarding funding of the CDBG and interim financing.
Yep, it's all good. We were supposed to have a presentation by Eagle Scout candidate Daniel Standring, and he did not show, so I guess we'll have to give him a couple of demerits.
No merit badge for promptness.
So I, I don't, I don't. Yeah. Okay, so we're going to move on to general government, and we are going to have a report that we've been waiting on for a while from the CAO. Kind of reviewing what we've done in, in the past year or so. Projects that were undertaken and programs. So Jay, take it away. I kind of expanded it beyond just programs and, and projects. The Board of Supervisors, as anybody that follows the board understands, delves into a lot of different things. I mean, at any given meeting, you may have half a dozen resolutions or proclamations that you deal with. And each one of those obviously has a purpose. Those I haven't really noticed on here, but there's a considerable amount of those that the board will get involved in and some of those directly. You know, I, I attempted to be in, going through this to give some highlights. Some of these are, like I said, projects. Others are just to give the public an understanding of what you've dealt with pretty much over the last fiscal year. You know, the, the year started out recognizing a contingency of students, faculty, and advisors from Takata High School. And a lot of work and collaboration done with a lot of individuals and volunteers, the school district, county OES, sheriff's office. And I kind of wanted to highlight it and start off with that one because of the significance that it has to the Japanese contingency that came over as well as the people that worked on, on the project in getting the boat back to Japan and as well as bringing the contingency over and our people going over to meet with them. And the significance that it has for the Office of Emergency Services here because I think it drove home the point that if we have an emergency to that magnitude, it's going to take a long time to recover. And one of the highlights that OES will be bringing forward is continuation of government. And the training that, that was conducted not too long ago for a lot of our executive staff, if you want to call it that, touches on the point that the, you know, the Board of Supervisors, the city council, will need to, you know, they'll have a significant role once the emergency happens. Continuation of government requires leadership, and that's where our elected officials come in. It will be difficult, you know, and if we're, if we see something of that magnitude, all of us may not be here. Yeah, that's just the reality. And, but the public, you know, requires that their leaders step up and take a lead. And I thought that that, that contingency and the speech that was made by a couple of their people, the speeches, really drove home that, that point. There were a number of new elected officials, and there have been a lot of new appointed officials hired by the board. And as we go through the next couple of years, those are our leaders that will be stepping up. And I think people need to understand that their responsibilities and, and their actions are what's going to lead this county, and they need to support those as best they can. There was, the board took action regarding a resolution. And a lot of times, we go through the resolutions. People hear those. They don't really know what that really means. But it was urging the, the United States and Congress to protect the Smith River watershed as part of mining projects that are in the headwaters of the Smith. And that might sound like an excellent project, but it's very significant in that it affects not just the county residents, but city residents, the entire community, special districts. So, you know, when we get into resolutions, I think that when the board takes those up, they are very serious. And, you know, I, I wanted to reiterate the, that one in particular because of the community impact. Board of Supervisors was asked to be on the special stakeholder committee for Last Chance Great. The board took action to place Supervisor Finnegan on that committee. Very significant because it is a, it is the county's direct involvement in that process. As discussed earlier today, there's a lot of people involved in this, and it's going to take a concerted effort and a community effort to get where we need to get. The Department of Emergency Services was approved. The board took action on a mass notification system. One of our departments, and one that, you know, obviously hits home for me because it's one of my departments, is emergency services. A lot of excellent work being done. It's also an extremely community-minded department. Everybody is encouraged to be involved, the mass notification system as it rolls out and appears to be rolling out very successfully and utilizing the school's kids. If you can use kids to get their parents to act, that's an excellent way to go. And Cindy Henderson is the manager for that, but, and she does an excellent job in bringing people together. There's a lot of people involved in this, and we go back to the first item on this. If we have a significant or if we have a very minor emergency, I think the public needs to be aware that it's, it's planned for and it'll be taken care of to the best ability that we have. It's, Dell Nord County is looked at as, at the forefront of emergency services as small as we are. And the board has supported that throughout the, the development over the last several years. On a, on a more sad note, the Board of Supervisors recognized the passing of Congressman Don Claussen and what he did for our industries through the airport, through aviation, as well as his work as a congressman. The Board of Supervisors recognized the Border Coast Joint Powers Association and their contract with Penn Air. Our members on there and the entire board supported the continuation of commercial, commercial air service. And although it may not all be going south yet, meaning flying south, not going south, it is a step in that direction, and now we see Arcata being involved in that also with Penn Air. The, I, the Board of Supervisors as a whole has acknowledged the significance of air service in Dell Nord County. The, on, on another very significant note, the Board of Supervisors passed a bill of rights into children's budget. That will keep our children at the forefront of the Board of Supervisors, and you'll be making reviews and decisions in regards to funding on, on an annual basis that affects our kids, primarily through social services, but that includes probation. It includes recreation. You know, it, it is a significant step in just making sure that we focus on some of those important items. The Board of Supervisors took action to appoint Supervisor Hemmingson and Supervisor Howard to represent themselves regarding the, or represent themselves, represent the board on the Clamath Fisheries issues. To date, those have, those have been very successful. The collaboration of the board, the support of the board in going forward with the guides to address some issues that have come up appears to be steps in the right direction in, in getting the tribe, the county, and some state agencies on board. County partnered with Humboldt, Trinity Lake, Mendocino, and Sonoma Counties regarding policies on marijuana. In this case, it was primarily recreational, but we see medical marijuana as another issue that's come forward. And it was a very proactive approach to make sure that the county and the people of Dell Nord County have a say in how that commodity will be dealt with if it becomes legalized, which it appears to be on the forefront in the next, this year. The board took a stance that they wanted very much to be in, in control of recreational marijuana and how we avoid some of the issues that come with alcohol. and how we avoid some of the issues that come with alcohol and tobacco and some of the others. The highest priority infrastructure project that the Board had on its list, which was a 15-year exercise, was the Fred Hay Drive Project in Smith River, which finally came to fruition. And as a resident of Smith River, I can tell you I liked the project, it was excellent. It came in on time, and I haven't heard very many complaints, and believe me, out in Smith River, if somebody wants to complain, they'll tell me. The Ag Commission Animal Control Office, they received a donation of a mural commemorating adoptions and the efforts of volunteers. Significant in that we have a department that is very small, that's General Fund, that competes with a lot of other departments for funding, and these volunteers make that what it is now, along with some very dedicated and limited staff. And I was fortunate to be out there for a couple of hours during their effort, and they're going to be doing this again. But they had, you know, at adoption day, also, a lot of the volunteers were out there walking dogs during that process, and it was very encouraging. One of those where results-based budgeting is working, because the Board also dedicated a position to that department based on the results that they've received. We entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Uroc Tribe regarding the Hotel Casino Project. Took a long time. I think that it put in place some relationships that can be positive in the future regarding collaboration and grants, set the table for an agreement that the Sheriff was working on regarding deputization. That's another significant agreement that the Board approved, and as I said, the Sheriff at the forefront of that, very much appreciated because the area in Klamath needs to have additional safety, and hopefully that comes to fruition to the point that we have multiple officers down there. Not significant in my mind. Sometimes it gets passed over when the public is viewing our meetings, and they get a little bored with it, but the Board passed a $120 million budget. And the reason I bring that up is, number one, that's one of my primary responsibilities as the CAO, but it sets the basis for all the services that Delmar County does provide. And we have a tremendous number of departments providing services, and spent a couple hours this morning, and the entire time, our employees are providing services to the public. Sometimes we're criticized over how we do that, but we do make changes, and we try to do it to the best ability we can. And it's very much appreciated for the employees, as well as the Board, in their direction. The Community Development Department, with the assistance of City Public Works Department, addressed a significant sewer line leak under 101 that could have been a tremendous disaster in the sense of a failure, and it was done in a week's time, it was done on budget, and most people didn't even know that it was happening. And that's a very positive public works process, and it stresses the collaboration between the city and the county. There was funding approved by the Board of Supervisors in regards to a county voting system to bring us up to speed and to be certified. Significant in the amount of money that has to be dedicated to do this, and to make sure that our voting system is the best voting system we can have. You know, the, I can go on for other programs and projects. I'm always gonna end with recreation. It's one of my favorites, and we get a lot of feedback because it touches so many people, not just kids, but the adults that support them, and the businesses that also support those. So, I end that one because I think that it's a very successful project that a lot of people are seeing right now, and we do appreciate the cooperation of the school district on using their facilities. I met with the superintendent recently, and he wasn't aware of any issues, which is exactly how we want it to be, because they utilize our facilities too, and that's how we like those collaborations. Just to underline, all of the actions that the Board has taken over the last year, this just, this just touches on some of the actions you've taken. The dedication of funding towards social programs, to public safety, I don't know if the public really understands how many different departments we have, but I always use the public safety departments to kind of give them an understanding of what the Board has to deal with, usually on a, on a five-monthly basis. We not only have the Sheriff's Department out patrolling and sometimes arresting people, but we have to then defend those people, we have to prosecute those people, and we have to look after those people if they go on probation. And we also give those people some services through other types of departments. It's interesting, most people don't understand a lot of the things that the Board does, and I hope this gives them a kind of an overview, and if they have questions, I encourage them to call our office, and we'll give them whatever answers we can give them.
Great, thanks, Jay. You know, I just would like to mention that every item that you picked out there, and I think all the Board members feel the same way, we don't look at it as just an individual county project or county resolution. We look at how it impacts the entire community. So we're looking at those relationships that we have with the city, with the harbor, with the tribes. All of those things come into play. When we make a decision, we're looking out for the betterment of the community, and I think you just illustrated that with, with everything that you brought up there. I don't think there was one item in there that didn't include the entire community. We, that's what we're looking to, to better, is the, is the entire community. Anybody else have something to say? David?
Yeah, just for clarification, your $120 million budget, yes, it's a lot of money. It always is a lot of money. The General Fund implications on that is probably only about somewhere in 16 and 19, and probably discretionary, down to about three or four million dollars. So, it's out of that smaller pocket that we really get to fund some of the programs that the different community interests fight over. And the other thing I do want to weigh in as a member of the Airport Board, it was appreciated that this Board of Supervisors supported the decision made by the Airport Board to go with Penn Air, because there were members of the community that wanted that other airline, I'm not, you know, so they could go south. I mean, I talked about going south. Well, whether it was Seaport or whatever their name is, those individuals should know that that is now defunct, and no longer services California, canceled all their contracts, and thank God for the vision of the JPA and the support of this Board.
Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Chair. You know, one of the reasons that I requested this to be added as, as a new supervisor, I always have constituents coming up to me and calling me crazy for wanting to have been an elected official in this community. And I, I oftentimes have to refer back to what this Board has done in the last year. And even though we have our, our discussions, our arguments per se, we do come to resolution, and we do do good things to the community, and it's those things that keep you wanting to serve as an elected official. And I know, I see some folks shaking their heads. That's, that's the rewarding parts of our job, even though there's not a lot there to reimburse us for that work that we do oftentimes that keeps us away from our kids. It's those rewarding things that's gonna serve the community as a whole, as Chair Hemmingson mentioned, that keep us coming back for more. And I really appreciate the CEO's time putting that together. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to echo what we are all saying. We all have our styles and our mannerisms, but there's a greater good here to be achieved. And when I wake up in the morning, I say, quality of life, how can I improve the life of someone who I have the responsibility to help? And it's through this Board of Supervisors. It's the bully pulpit that we all sit here. And when someone comes to me with even a small problem, I tend to want to get involved and probably micromanage it. At the same time, I see the greater good here. And when a problem comes up, and we do have significant problems, I'd like to see our Board play as prominent a role as it can in helping to solve those problems. Last Chance Grade being one of them, the lake that, for me, it's our community, and growing is another one, and our hospital. All our issues that involve quality of life, so it may appear that sometimes we disagree, but in the reality, we all have the same goal in mind. We want to make our county a better place to live, and want to attract as many people, as people coming into our community and say, we agree with you, it's a great place to live. So, thank you, good job, Jay.
Sure.
I was gonna kind of be quiet because I really appreciated your report, Jay, because I do agree with my fellow supervisors that many times we go, we go to the argument rather than to the success side of what, the good work that we do do, and I appreciate that, and I know that, you know, I've been doing this a long time, and in fact, I talked to someone yesterday who was warning me about, oh, if you take that vote, you're going to lose constituents. And my response is, is that when I sit up here, every vote I take, I take in a, in a manner that I've done the research, I've done my homework, and I've never voted in my 20 years in a fearful way, that, oh gosh, if I vote this way, then I'm not gonna have support anymore. I've always tried to make sure that our votes are tied to the greater good, and I, I believe that wholeheartedly, and I know that, for me, my first community service here was when I was about seven, and I've been in community service in my community ever since, and I think that that's what this is about. And I appreciate when I hear a Board moving back to that kind of roots, because I think those roots will be, it'll be contagious to other people to say, yeah, we should work together on items for the greater good. So, I appreciate the report, and I appreciate that we have some good stuff to leave this meeting on today.
We do. Great job, Jay, thank you. Anybody have any public comment on Jay's report out? Okay, we're gonna move on to legislative and budget issues. You gonna help us with that, Jay?
Sure.
You want me to do it all?
If I get my papers here. From a legislative standpoint, there's a couple of things that are at the forefront right now that I just received some information on. One is some legislation going forward for FAA reauthorization, and how that might affect our EAS program. There may be some positives in there, but there are also some potential pitfalls that we're going to be reviewing and hopefully weighing in on through our advocate, but if the Board is then required or needed to put their name behind that, we'll be bringing forward a request for a letter. It includes EAS, but also the AIP, and I'll use those acronyms, but it's the Airport Improvement Program, which funds a lot of the projects that happen at, at the airport. EAS is essential air service, which subsidizes commercial air at the airfield itself. I just received those yesterday, so we do have a little bit of time to weigh in on that, and we'll be talking to the airport also in regards to what they may want or may need us to assist through our advocate. I sent that off to the airport manager yesterday. So we also are looking at some legislation on criminal justice system reform, essentially legislation that could deal with sentencing reform and corrections, and we've been through that at the state level, and so we're very cautious in looking at what they're going to propose regarding mandatory minimum sentences, and looking at what they're calling the second chance reauthorization. It's directed to reauthorize and streamline the Second Chance Act programs, which deal with grants, training, and technical assistance, so we'll be looking at that also, how that might affect us positively. And then there's another bill that's regarding Comprehensive Justice and Mental Health Act, and deals with mentally ill offenders. And all of those do have some potential impact on the county. Our advocates are sending me emails on a daily basis in regards to these, so that we can stay on top of them. As we go forward on the budget end of things, we should be getting most of our mid-year budget information posted by the individual departments. We'll then sit down and look at the ones that have the issues, and we'll be bringing it forward, a report as soon as we get all those posted. So, I'm hoping that we'll be able to have those for the next meeting, and then we can, at the latest, it would be the first meeting in March, but then we're starting right into the new budget year. And at this point, there are a couple of financial issues. Nothing on the, on the really high side, but there are some issues that we're going to report to the Board and then talk about any types of solutions here at mid-year, or as we go into the new year.
Okay, David, you got anything else on?
Yeah, a couple of things. I may not be at the next meeting, 'cause I'll be back in Washington DC with the National Association of Counties, and so I'll talk with FAA if necessary. I'll talk with Greg and see if we have some discussions there along the lines of, which we should be concerned about is I'm also on the Board of Directors for the National Forest County Schools Coalition. And I believe, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, that we received our last payment from the timber receipts, and we're looking at a million dollars a year to schools and roads. If that does not, if we do not find some enabling legislation sometime within the next several months, well, I'm not gonna do the doom and gloom, but it would be dire for this community and our road department. So we'll be working very hard on that. And then on a local level, just some good news on the airport. It will be announced sometime in the near future publicly that the scheduling is gonna change in April. The planes are gonna leave a little earlier in the morning, and they're gonna come back later at night. So the connectivity in and out of here through Portland to make, whether it's Sacramento, San Francisco, places back east will be phenomenal. So, stay tuned.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Chair, I'd like the Board to consider discussion for our next meeting in February specific to the drought budget trailer bill, Senate Bill 88, and inviting Eric Weir from the city as a municipal water district, and also maybe some of our other community service districts to the table to brief this Board on what we could do to prepare for the meeting in the first part of May of the State Water Board, specific to the implementation of this drought relief bill. Obviously, my discussion this morning pertain to the impacts, not only to our CSDs, but it impacts our entire community as water users, not only in cost of installing equipment to certify the equipment, but also is it necessary for our area. My hope would be, after hearing discussion with this Board from our various CSDs that have gone out and formed coalition, that we could come to consensus as a Board to take a message to the State Water Resources Board in May that would potentially help us exempt ourselves, Humboldt County, Delmar County, from a drought relief bill.
And I would suggest maybe that we have, get together the resource committee first, and then, and then bring that to the Board, maybe at the following, it could possibly work out to be at the following meeting, but my schedule's probably not gonna allow that. It's probably gonna be the subsequent meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any? I do have a, I do have one thing I just wanted to bring up. I did receive a petition, I don't know who it was from, on the county taking over the management of the lake. So, if we could, I don't know, maybe, I don't know if you want to take a look at this and, and see if that's a possibility, or where we go with this, but maybe it's something that we can put on the next agenda, if you want to.
I'll try to track down who might have submitted it. I'll look at the names on there, and we'll try to figure out who it was.
Okay.
One last thing in regards to the legislation and budget. I did want to bring to the Board's attention that, you know, we have extremely low gas prices right now because of the oil, oil issue throughout the world. One of the ramifications from that is the gas tax goes down, which is, which feeds back through the road department, and right now, we're looking at a potential 50% reduction in the funding that goes back to the road department because of that. And it's just one of those situations that happens when you have a fluctuation in, in gas prices. So I bring it up, but...
I'm glad you brought it up. I like to look for solutions rather than the doom and gloom. We talked about different styles. It is a fact that in the Governor's Budget and the projections for the upcoming year, that there is gonna be a decline in the gas tax going back to the counties. And it's gonna continue, that nobody wants to project a... And it's going to continue, that nobody wants to project a recession, but there will be one before the next people that are elected go out of office. If you look at the history and the trends and the spiking and what's going on and how long upswings last and downswings, it's coming, and transportation is going to have a big hit. I will continue to keep this Board apprised of what we're doing with the Road Usage Charge Committee that I sit on for CTC to replace the gas tax, and we still have to find an $8 billion hole to fill there. So, I'm glad you're aware of it, the public needs to be aware of it, it's dire when it comes to local roads. Thank God we have a little bit of carve-out for rural roads and bridges, but even that's not enough, so. It's coming.
Okay, anything else? I think we're done. Meeting adjourned.